All right, and we're live.
Wonderful. All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 6:32 PM. This is a Monday, November 23rd of 2020, and we are holding this meeting via Zoom. We'll start our meeting by calling or by roll call. Darcy, could you help me with that, please?
You bet.
Where is it?
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Lopes.
Here.
Commissioner Pascoe.
Here.
Commissioner Pack.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
It's you, Murf.
Do we have audio for Murf?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Commissioner Stevens.
Very hard to hear you, Murf.
Is it?
Very hard to hear you.
Okay. I'll see if I can fix that.
Go ahead, Darcy.
Commissioner Stevens.
I'm here.
And did I already call Commissioner Phillips?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Commissioner Schrodl.
And you did not hear from Steve, did you, Darcy?
I did not.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll move into public comment, and this is an opportunity, and I do see that we have a couple guests in background. This is the opportunity for anything that's not on the agenda to be brought up, whether those are comments or questions. So can you ask our visitors if they have any comments or questions?
If anybody who's in is an attendee, which at this point I see KPTV News and Dennis Tilka. If you have any comments to items that are not on our agenda tonight, can you go ahead and use the raise hand function?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, very good. All right. How is my volume right now?
You're good.
Okay, very good. All right, then we will be moving into our public hearing, and so we shall begin. I have a couple pages I need to read. The public hearing is now open for the consideration of ZDO 273, a legislative proposal to amend the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance. Clackamas County is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic, so this public hearing will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. Panelists for today's hearing, which include members of the Planning Commission, county staff, have both audio and video capability. Audience members who have joined the meeting will have their mics muted unless they wish to testify, in which case they will be called upon to do so by the county staff moderator. Audience members' video will not be turned on at any time. Today's hearing is being recorded as required by law. The county will make every effort to post the recording on the county website as soon as possible. The Planning Commission is charged with making a recommendation on the application to the Board of County Commissioners. The record from this hearing will be forwarded to the board, which will make the final decision on this matter. The board will conduct another hearing on this application on December 9th of 2020 at 9:30 AM. That hearing will be de novo, meaning that the hearing will start anew, and additional testimony may be offered. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond 10 PM. If not concluded, it will be continued to a date and time certain. The hearing may be continued for other reasons as well. If the announcement, excuse me, if unannouncement of an additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it will be the only notice given of that additional hearing. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. One, Planning and Zoning Division staff report. Two, entry into the record of any additional correspondence received. Three, technical information from other government agencies. Four, testimony by representatives of recognized community planning organizations or hamlets. Maximum length, 10 minutes per CPO or hamlet. Five, testimony by any other person, maximum length, three minutes per speaker or more, as determined by chair. Closing of the public hearing, and finally, seven, Planning Commission decision and action. There is a designated time during the hearing in which it will be open for testimony. The chair will make it clear when this is. If you want to provide testimony, you will utilize the raise hand feature in Zoom if it is available to you. If it is not available to you, an alternative will be provided. Attendees on PC and iPad, you have a raise hand button on the Zoom bar, top or bottom, depending on your device. When the moderator switches you over to provide testimony, your screen will look different for a moment. Primarily, you will see all participants' cameras, not just the one who is speaking. Staff will call upon you when it is time for you to provide testimony. For the record, please state your name and where you are from or who you are representing when you begin. Once you have provided your testimony, your mic will be muted, and your screen will be returned to normal. The Planning and Zoning Division staff will now present the staff report. And I believe Martha, Pritzy, you're on. Thank you.
All right. I have a presentation for you, and I am going to share it. So, oh, look at that, that was fast. Come on. There we go. Okay. Good evening. I am Martha Pritzy, Principal Planner with the County's Planning and Zoning Division, and we are here today to talk about ZDO 273 Short Term Rentals, specifically some proposed amendments to the Zoning and Development Code related to short-term rentals. The proposal includes, that we're talking about today, includes only amendments to the Zoning and Development Ordinance, specifically to clarify where short-term rentals are allowed. Those amendments would include an allowance for short-term rentals in most legal dwellings. I say most because there are some dwellings that are approved under our zoning code for specific uses or for use by specific people. For example, temporary dwelling for care or hardship dwelling or farmworker dwelling. And those would continue to not be allowed to be used as a short-term rental. They would have to be used by the population or populations or persons that they are approved for. There would be an allowance for guest houses to be used as short-term rentals, and we'll talk a little bit more about this later on the presentation. But just very briefly, guest houses are not houses, they are guest quarters. They are approved only in certain zoning districts in the county. They are essentially an extension of your dwelling. Some, you know, an extra bedroom, maybe a little living area for guests. It can be attached or detached. And so when we talk about short-term rentals, we're talking about the rental of either an entire dwelling unit or a portion of a dwelling unit to any person or entity for a period of up to 30 consecutive nights. This, this, what we are talking about this evening is basically the tail end of a larger project, and it's only a piece of this larger project. About two years ago, the Board of County Commissioners asked planning staff to work on a project related to short-term rentals and to look at ways to potentially allow or not allow and how to regulate short-term rentals. And the reason that the planning staff was asked to embark on this project were threefold, one of which we are considering today is the fact that our zoning and development ordinance doesn't specifically allow for short-term rentals in homes. And so from a zoning perspective, short-term rentals are considered not allowed and not an allowed use of a dwelling. But regardless, we know there are hundreds. There's an estimate of maybe up to 1,000 short-term rentals operating in the county. A number of these have been operating for decades up in the resort areas in Mount Hood. Recently, interest has been growing a little bit, largely because of the online platforms that have become popular, like the Airbnbs and the VRBOs, which have allowed this industry to grow to areas that are not typically the resort areas. And so there is an interest in creating some clarification in our zoning code about where this would be allowed. There's also an acknowledgement that sometimes short-term rental properties can generate some negative neighborhood impacts. There have been some significant complaints from some of the short-term rental properties operating. And also, it became apparent that many short-term rental operators were not paying the required transient room tax. And so for these reasons, the board asked us to start this project. It has, a lot of work has been done over the last two years. Research, a lot of public outreach, some very large, well-attended community meetings, social media press releases, a website that's continually updated with information, a number of surveys, at least eight policy sessions with the Board of County Commissioners, two work sessions with this group with the Planning Commission. And so far, there have been three public hearings before the Board of County Commissioners. And so I mentioned that this, we're sort of at the tail end, and also that this is only what, the, the subject of tonight's hearing is only a portion of this short-term, larger short-term rental project. There's really three pieces to the short-term rental program that is under consideration right now for adoption. The first piece is amendments to the county code, and that is where the entire short-term rental registration program is proposed to be housed, including all rules and regulations specific to short-term rentals, application processes, requirements, enforcement processes, things like that. In addition, and running concurrent to that adoption process right now are these Zoning and Development Ordinance amendments that we're considering today. These amendments are proposed to clarify where short-term rentals are specifically allowed and to clarify within the zoning and development ordinance that they would be allowed in a dwelling unit, allowed, an allowed use in a guest house. And if the Board of County Commissioners is to adopt the county code amendments for the larger registration program, the zoning code amendments are needed to eliminate any conflicts that, that would occur because of the fact that the zoning code doesn't specifically allow them right now. And then finally, the third piece, which I'm not really going to spend any time on, is really tied directly to the first piece. If county code amendments are adopted, there are certain fees and fines that would have to be adopted with it. That wouldn't happen until the, the spring of next year. And so I said these are running concurrent. Originally, we had tried to schedule public hearings, so this could run in numerical order, so we would know whether or not the Board of County Commissioners was going to adopt this short-term rental registration program. Because of some timing conflicts, it didn't work out quite like that, so we're running them concurrently. There has been one public hearing for that program on November 5th. The second reading of public hearing to consider the county code amendments to adopt the entire short-term rental program is going to occur on Wednesday. If the board decides to adopt it at that point in time, that will be done, it will be adopted. The zoning code amendments that we are running concurrently, there will, today, obviously, is a hearing in front of the Planning Commission. There will be a public hearing in front of the board specifically on the zoning code amendments on December 9th. And if they decide to adopt the zoning code amendments, the ordinance adoption would occur on December 17th. And then, again, in the spring, there's, there'll be talk about fees and fines if the county code amendments are adopted. And I'm, I'm spending a little time trying to outline these three pieces because they are tied together, but they are not necessarily completely dependent upon each other, and we'll talk about that a little bit with the, with the ZDO amendments. The ZDO, the ZDO amendments that are being proposed are not dependent upon whether or not the county code amendments are adopted by the board, but the implication of the ZDO amendments would be different depending on whether or not the board adopts or decides not to adopt this program. So what are these ZDO amendments? Well, two sections are proposed for, for amendments. They were included in your packet, Section 202, Definitions. And in that section, there's amendments proposed to the definition of a dwelling unit. And the amendments will specify that a dwelling unit can be used as a short-term rental rented on a short-term basis of 30 days or less. And there are amendments proposed for the guest houses section, Section 833. Currently, there is a stipulation in Section 833 that says guest houses cannot be used as a source of rental income. That would be changed to allow for guest houses to be used as a source of rental income as a short-term rental. And in both cases, the number of occupants in the short-term rental, either the dwelling unit alone or the dwelling plus the guest house, because remember, it's just kind of an extension of your dwelling, cannot exceed 15. And we put that language in the proposal for a couple of reasons. One is currently the way that our structure of our zoning code is outlined in Section 202 and Definitions. A family can live in a single-family dwelling or in a dwelling unit, and the family is defined to not exceed 15 people. And we wanted to make sure that in the allowance of using a dwelling unit as a short-term rental or a dwelling unit in the guest house as a short-term rental, that that number was still not exceeded. And so essentially, this is still a residential use of a residential home. And we do have this cap of 15 already in our zoning code. We're just trying to make it very clear that that cap still applies when it's a short-term rental. And so these are legislative text amendments, and as such, they're subject to all the relevant goals and policies in the statewide planning goals, Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, the County Comprehensive Plan, Zoning and Development Ordinance. In your staff report, there, the findings related to each of the relevant goals or policies in these documents is described in some detail. Generally speaking, staff has found that all relevant goals and policies are met, specifically with clarifying the rental use of a dwelling unit. Goal 10 and the comprehensive plan policies are met because both, both statewide planning goal 10, which is housing, and the county's comprehensive plan talk about allowing for housing at a variety of types and available to a variety of income levels. There's nothing in goal 10 or the comprehensive plan that seeks to regulate how dwellings are used in terms of whether or not they are owner or renter occupied. And then goal 12, which is transportation, again, is met because, largely because of this cap of 15 people. There's no increase in the number of occupants in the dwelling. If you're using it as a short-term rental, a long-term rental, owner occupied, there is, there's no difference. And so when the dwelling was, at the time of the dwelling was built, it would have been developed compliant with our transportation system. And so there's no inconsistency with goal 12 policies there. And then the remaining policies and procedures, the comprehensive plan and the ZDO really have to do with procedures and processes, including citizen participation and then notification and opportunities for public input and hearing, all of which have been met by the processes followed for this proposed amendment. And so I said there is going to be some other considerations or implications if the board, around whether or not the board decides to adopt into the county code this short-term rental registration program. And so if the board decides to adopt these code changes on Wednesday, the effect of these ZDO amendments that we're looking at today would just be to clarify where short-term rentals are allowed. All short-term rentals would be subject to everything that's adopted into the county code, and there's a number of regulations associated with that, including a maximum number of people, including parking. There, there's a whole litany of things that would be written into the county code that are included in the registration program. However, if the board doesn't adopt those county code changes and doesn't adopt this short-term rental program, we can still adopt the ZDO amendments, and the effect would be that it would clarify that short-term rentals are allowed in dwellings. And there would just be no additional regulations on it. There wouldn't be no additional registration program, additional regulations. There would still be a requirement that operators of short-term rental would have to register for and pay the transient room tax, which should be happening now. The, when you're thinking about these considerations, about whether or not it's appropriate to adopt the ZDO amendments with, with or without this associated program that the board might adopt, there's a number of considerations, you know. Providing the certainty in the ZDO is certainly a benefit to future and existing property owners as they are looking at making financial investments in properties, and it provides, it would provide certainty for existing short-term rental operators to, to know they can continue to operate, and they can register and pay the appropriate taxes without this concern that there may be some enforcement taken on them in the future simply because of what they're doing. I think it is fair to say that through the course of this project, there has generally been, not universal, but generally been, public support for allowing short-term rentals, where a lot of the disagreement has come is how to regulate, how much to regulate, whether to regulate. But I think in general, the predominant feeling is that there is public support that short-term rentals should be allowed. But like I said, if the zoning code amendments are adopted without the county code amendments, there would be essentially no additional regulation of the short-term rentals. It would just be in allowed use. So as you were thinking this through, Planning Commission, you make a recommendation to the board that we take to the hearing that's scheduled for December 9th. I tried to outline a couple of options for you because this is a little bit complicated because of the timing with the county code amendments. You could choose to recommend denial of the, of ZDO 273 today of all of the proposed zoning code amendments. You could choose to recommend approval, whether or not the short-term rental program is adopted into the county code. You could choose to recommend to the board approval, but only if they decide to adopt the short-term rental program. Otherwise, you would recommend denial. Or you could recommend approval of only a part of it. For example, only the changes to the allowance in the dwelling unit, but not allowances in the guest houses. Or alternatively, allowance in guest houses, but not allowances in, in dwelling units. So you have a lot of options, and we can, we will certainly take your recommendation to the board and be very clear about what that was. And there may be other options. I was just trying to start everyone thinking around this and being comfortable with the fact that it's not an all or nothing at this point. So staff is recommending approval of the proposed amendments in ZDO 273 as drafted. And staff is recommending approval regardless of whether the short-term rental program is adopted into the county code for a couple of reasons, one being that we feel that the ZDO really does need clarity. It's, it's difficult to administer a zoning code that doesn't clearly allow or disallow a specific use. And the changes to the guest house portion really are still retaining the intent of a guest house. It's, you know, a guest house can be rented to non-paying guests on a short-term basis. This simply allows someone to make some additional income off of it on a short-term basis. It's not speaking to a long-term rental or anything like that. It does, it is specific to less than 30 days at a time. So we feel that it really is just in keeping with the intent of the guest house. And so that is my whole presentation. I'm happy to answer questions. If anybody has any questions. I'm going to stop sharing right now so we can all see each other.
Are there any questions for staff from the commission? Please do use the raise hand Zoom feature or simply raise your hand if you are visible on video. So either raise your hand or, I'm married, and you're muted. Okay.
Let me unraise my hand before I forget. So I had a question on why this ended up as, in the definitions. I think I remember from our study sessions, it, what, we didn't want to do it as a home occupancy because then that was an issue with owner occupied versus not units. But why is it in the definitions rather than, say, an allowed accessory use?
Oh, I, I muted instead of unmuting. Well, that's a really good question, and I think that the reason it ended up in definitions is that we're really trying to clarify that this is just a residential use. It isn't, it can be accessory to your dwelling. It doesn't necessarily have to be. You don't have to occupy the dwelling to use it as a short-term rental. And, and so it really is just to clarify that we are not going to regulate how long a period of time you rent your, your dwelling out for. If you, we don't regulate if you rent it out for a month or longer as a long-term rental. And so it's just to clarify that this is indeed a residential use.
Okay.
Um, yes, Murf.
See if you can hear me. Can you hear me? Awesome. Okay. Number one, if we do not adopt the ZDOs and accept them into the county ZDO, they, then, short-term rentals are still not officially legal in Clackamas County. Am I correct?
Yes.
So with that in mind, we cannot regulate something that's not basically accepted in Clackamas County in any way, shape, or form. Am I correct?
Yes, I'd say that's correct.
So if we have neighbors that are complaining that they have 33 people next door and 38 down the street each weekend, because that's what the short-term rentals are doing, we really have no way to enforce that, do we?
So I get, it depends on what the infractions are. So certain things that are building, light, fire, safety violations could be enforced upon. Noise violations could be enforced upon by the sheriff's office. Illegal activities, you know, drug use or cars illegally parked and blocking public rights of way would be enforced in the sheriff's office. But, but you're right. A lot of the other things would not, could not be enforced.
Would, would we still have a registration fee or would there be any monies to pay for enforcement if we adopt the ZDOs?
If, if the ZDO amendments are adopted, but the board does not adopt the registration program, then no, there wouldn't be any additional money. There wouldn't be any fee or any additional money for code enforcement. If the ZDO changes are adopted and the county code amendments are adopted to create this short-term rental registration program, there would be a registration fee. There would be more money for code enforcement, and there would be more regulations that could be enforced.
Okay.
That part of the decision is not up to you all today. That's just one of the implications of adopting the ZDO amendments with or without that piece of it.
Okay, thank you.
I think Jennifer wanted to.
Yeah, I just want to jump in for a second. So maybe it helps to think about it this way. So if you, if the county code amendments are ultimately not adopted, but you amend the zoning code, then it's just a dwelling unit like any other dwelling unit, and it is subject to the exact same zoning regulations, the exact same criminal codes, the exact same nuisance codes as any other dwelling unit in the county. And it's, so it's enforced the same way, and the lack, the funding or lack thereof for enforcement would be the same for that short-term rental unit as it would be for somebody's long-term rental or for somebody's primary dwelling unit, all the same. The difference is if the regulations are adopted into the county code, then short-term rental dwelling units are going to be regulated differently. They are going to be subject to rules that do not apply to long-term rentals or primary residences for owner occupancy. And those special regulations will be sort of administered through this registration program, and there will be a fee. And then there will be extra money from that fee, in theory. Again, it depends. But in theory, if it's set at a high enough level, and all that has to be determined, that there could be extra enforcement for both those special regulations and conceivably, you know, maybe other quality of life issues related to noise or other things that could be directed specifically towards short-term rental enforcement. So it's really, are these different than other dwelling units and treated differently through this separate program? Or are they just like every other dwelling unit? Or is it simply not an allowed use? And those are kind of, I think, the three tiers that we're talking about.
Thank you.
How much enforcement effort are we talking about here?
Well, we have no idea. Our code enforcement folks don't track enforcement cases by whether or not it's owner occupied, renter occupied, or short-term renter occupied. So, so we don't know.
So you, so you really don't know the impact on whoever's doing the enforcement, what, what we're gonna see as far as an impact on our sheriff or whoever code enforcement officers are working with?
Well, that, that's true, but you also have to keep in mind that this is going on right now and there already has been an impact. And simply making it clear that they are allowed is not necessarily going to cause a huge influx of new ones. It may, there may be some new ones certainly, if, if they think it's legal and there's a path. But there.
So we haven't, so we haven't been, we haven't been enforcing it now?
Nothing to enforce.
We are enforcing if there's infractions that would be enforceable in any other dwelling.
The county has currently not prioritized the enforcement of short-term rentals as a use. So we are aware they exist, we are aware they have existed for years. The zoning code does not speak to it, but no one's been going out attempting to shut down short-term rentals. What it's created is sort of this uncertainty for the public. We tell them, well, we don't think they're allowed under the zoning code and yet, right? We know there's hundreds of them and no, nobody's taking steps at the moment to, to shut those down. The exception for enforcement has been where the occupancy exceeds that level of 15, those have been elevated to a higher priority. I don't have specifics on how many of those are, you know, have been the case, but there are, there were two or three high-profile ones that have caused significant neighbor complaints and one of the issues has been really high levels of occupancy. So tho- those have on occasion then been prioritized, but in general, code enforcement is not taking action if you've got sort of what I would describe as a run-of-the-mill short-term rental with six people staying in it. So that's part of the value of this project is we would like to actually be consistent with people and, you know, be able to say, yes, it's permitted subject to these rules or subject to no rules, whatever the determination ultimately is.
Murf?
Again, so if we did not pass the ZDOs tonight, the amendments too, and codes do not pass, would this require a non-conforming use land application to be legal to run a business like this in a residential area? Would it be up to a, a decision through that process?
No, i- if the, if neither the zoning code amendments nor the county code amendments pass, then nothing changes. It's still, our zoning code is still silent. We still don't think it's an allowed use, but we still know that there's a lot going on and at this point, code enforcement hasn't made it a priority. But like Jennifer said, it, you know, there's people out there who are living with uncertainty. You know, what if at some point it becomes a priority for the county to enforce on these? No, nothing would change.
Okay.
Yes, Carrie.
Um, what if, you know, the ZDO and the rules get modified by the board? Is the county proposing that this would be anything other than complaint-driven enforcement? Or, or are we actually gonna go and seek out, you know, folks that haven't, that are not in compliance with the set amendments?
So it would still largely be complaint-driven. There would be an opportunity to find and go after folks who haven't registered because we're told that it's fairly easy to find those folks because mostly they advertise on these online platforms. But like any other uses in a dwelling, we don't have staff out there driving around looking for violations. So it, a little bit of both, but primarily complaint-driven still.
I think I saw either Tom or Michael's hand up.
Michael had his.
Yeah, I have, back on page six of your presentation, Martha, you indicated that there was on November 5th, a Board of County Commissioners meeting and there were a vote of four to one. That negative vote, do you have any information on why that negative vote was cast?
So just to be very clear, that vote was a vote to proceed to the second hearing that was required. And so there was one commissioner who, who didn't think that this was the right time and that it was ready to move forward to the second hearing. It wasn't a vote whether to approve or deny directly, it was just a vote to move on to the second hearing for the second reading, which would be the final hearing.
Okay, thank you. Martha, can you expand on that? What, what was the reasoning of that commissioner for not believing it was ready to move forward?
So Jennifer may have to help my recollection here. You know, there, there's concerns about the fee and about assessing a fee on folks, although it should be noted that if this program moves forward, it's not expected to be implemented until at least July 1st of 2021. A, a lot of the hesitation really seems to revolve around the fee that would need to be charged for full cost recovery of the program, which is what we have heard from the board, they want out of this program. Is there anything else?
I have a follow-up question on that, too. Now, if, if we, if they do implement this and they have these extra fees or, or charges or whatever, do we, are we staff to be able to collect those or how is that gonna happen?
Well, the fee is actually to provide for the staff to administer and to provide enforcement for the program. And so it's calculated off the need for two additional staff people to, to implement this program.
Martha, I have a question on that. I know that a lot of our code enforcement top priorities are health and safety-driven. When you say we'll be adding like a code enforcement person, when we receive a complaint, will it go really beyond just to health and safety, but maybe more of the noise issue? Or I, I just know that not only do code enforcement work, you know, five days a week, but, and you're not weekends, and that's gonna certainly be a challenge with, you know, weekend rentals. But, you know, is the fee and the enforcement envisioned to be a little more than just health and safety, you know, super high priority stuff?
Yes, it would be directed to, specifically to a violation of any of the regulations that were written into the county code. And so there are other considerations, like the weekend enforcement and noise enforcement with, at, which actually is housed in the sheriff's department right now and it still would be. But there would be an opportunity with this fee and this additional dedicated code enforcement staff to address more than just what we're seeing now as high priority building, safety issues. I guess unless there were so many complaints that they'd have to prioritize within the short-term rental, but I don't know that we, that we're really anticipating that to happen.
And again, that's only if we approve the county code part of this.
That's only if the board approves the county code, county code portion of it, yes.
Thank you.
I, I have another question here regarding your guest house standards, 833.01A. You say their guest house shall be used only by members of the family residing in the primary dwelling. My question is, why is only in there? Could that be deleted? And just say, shall be used by members of the family residing?
So that's the beginning of a list, though. It can used only by members of the family residing in the primary dwelling, or their non-paying guests, or their non-paying employees, or with this addition, their paying guests that are paying on a short-term basis. And so the only is intended to modify those four situations.
So who does it exclude?
A separate family living in the dwelling as a, as a long-term rental, or, I'm excuse me, living in the guest house, because the guest house is not a dwelling, it doesn't have a kitchen. And it used to exclude any rental income. You are not allowed to use it for any rental income. So those first, the, the family, the non-paying guests, non-paying employees are currently in our code, but right now it says you can't rent it out at all. And so the, the change, the proposed change would be that you can rent it out to paying guests for a short-term basis.
And our thinking, just to maybe give you a little context for how Martha and I ended up here with this draft, is that this project didn't start out, we didn't start out thinking that guest houses would be used for short-term rental because currently and for many years, there's been this prohibition on renting guest houses. And I think it exists, if I had to guess, I mean, it's before my time, that's how long it's been there. But if I had to guess, it's because they were trying to discourage them from turning into separate dwelling units by making them a source of rental income. But it became clear during the county code amendment process and the discussion of the short-term rental regulations that the board wanted to have guest houses be available. They heard testimony from people and they were receptive to that and wanted them to be available for short-term rentals. So Martha and I tailored this language to address that issue and we decided that going farther and talking about turning guest houses into long-term rentals was beyond the scope of this project. But we put a pin in it and when we come back to talk about housing in the larger sense, this discussion will come up again and, and we can talk about pros and cons and whatnot, but we just felt like the idea was these, these amendments were really supposed to be limited to just dealing with the short-term rental question and that's the reason that we, we narrowed it that way.
Murf, do you have a question?
Of course I do. Last, in our last discussion, we had test, testimony from government camp and they brought up something very interesting. A person that lived in a HOA said they had their own set of rules to follow and they paid their own fees. Now, this was just another layer on top of that. That's something that I, I gave some serious thought to. Would there be an exclusion or a lesser payment or an overall payment for a condominium or for an HOA that had CCNRs that governed these types of activities?
So I'm just gonna start out by saying that the zoning code amendments don't do anything.
Okay.
Related to that. However, the way the county code amendments are drafted, there, there's not an exclusion for condominiums. There, there's no, they're treated no differently than other dwelling units. It's a dwelling unit, it just happens to be in a multifamily building. These ZDO amendments would just be clear that it's allowed in those condominiums.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Brian?
Sorry. So this might be opening up a little bit of a can of worms, but, uh, you know, some of the public comments were around this concept of potential impact on affordable housing, right? And given the, the length of the conversation we had two weeks ago, I'm wondering if there's any thought from staff about how this is consistent or not consistent with, you know, this, this long-term housing strategy that we're supposedly adopting and, and how this does or doesn't fit in and what the potential impacts are. Do you have any thoughts or insight on that?
I have lots and lots of thoughts about that. So a couple of things. Again, I'll remind you to keep in mind that we do have these operating in the county. There already in theory has been an impact. Bar our best estimate, there's maybe a thousand operating in the unincorporated area of the county, which is approximately one and a half, 1.6% of our overall housing stock. And so to the extent that you believe that making this clarification in our zoning code is suddenly going to create a market or, or demand for a whole lot more of these, there might be some impact to affordable housing. I think that this is a market-driven use of a dwelling and I don't know how big the market is. Since there hasn't been any real tracking or regulation, it could be that the market's saturated for now, or it might grow a little bit, but, but we have no way of knowing that, honestly. The second part of that answer is if the board adopts the county code amendments, that was something that was considered in the drafting of the amendments and certainly inside the urban growth boundary, the Portland Metropolitan Urban Growth Boundary, there are regulations in there that attempt to further limit any impacts to neighborhoods by requiring the home to be used as a rental be the primary residence of, of the owner, even though they could be gone for two months and rent the whole house out if they want, they don't have to be there. So if those are adopted, that was intended to, to help address that, certainly in the urban area where most of our housing is. However, again, if those aren't adopted, there's, there's nothing like that, certainly in the ZDO amendments. And so I think, sure, I would not say ever that there's no impact to housing or affordable housing in general, but I think that we have, we are living with whatever impact has happened and I don't know that I think that this amendment would create a significant number of new short-term rentals to be such a significant impact. I don't know the answer, though. I mean, it's certainly something to, to consider.
Right, I, I tend to agree with you on that and I, I, I think that units that are appropriate for a short-term rental and units that are appropriate for more affordable housing probably aren't the same thing, but it, you know, it'd be nice to have some, some evidence one way or the other, but, but I think you're right. I, I think the impact is limited, but who knows?
We did hear a lot of testimony, I mean, at the board level and the public comments we got as we were cracking these regulations about sort of a lot of different economic considerations and certainly what you're saying is one of them, the affordable, on the affordable housing side. Also heard a lot of testimony about people renting out rooms on a short-term basis that allow them to stay in their home that they would otherwise lose. I don't know what percentage, I can't tell you what percentage that is, but we certainly did hear testimony to that effect. People who are, you know, keeping sort of a, a family vacation home, you know, that's been in the family for generations and the only reason they can afford it is, you know, because of being able to do short-term rental. People who basically have a business, you know, they might own a couple of properties at Mount Hood catering to the tourism industry and that's helping them stay in their main home someplace else. We certainly heard testimony from folks at Mount Hood about, yes, there's a lack of affordable housing up there, but the, you know, the flip side of that is without those accommodations, the tourism industry can't survive up there and that's essentially what's driving the economy. So at the end, you know, you kind of wanna throw up your hands and say, you know, what's right, right? Because it's, there's all these competing points. It's tough.
I guess I just added, it seems to me, whether you have the, we approve this or not, people are gonna continue to rent their homes and, you know, it's a market-driven thing. So the, you know, affordable housing is, is a much broader issue than people just renting out their homes, I think. So to me, it shouldn't, shouldn't really have an impact on whether we, whether or not we adopt the ZDO. It's probably a more of an issue for if they want to implement better aspect, where they start regulating and starting charging money for people to rent homes. for people to rent homes. That might have, might have a, a different impact than what, what we do. At least that's my thoughts.
Anyone else? I, I see Murf, but let's finish our questions and then we can go on with more documentation.
Yes, I did have one more comment, and that was what Jennifer just hit on. Up in the Mount Hood area, I've heard complaints in the last couple of years from business owners, some of the restaurant owners, that their employees are having a very hard time finding affordable housing up here because the homes that they were in are now short-term rentals. And during the testimonies of the town halls you conducted, we heard people say that it was too much work to have a long-term rental for the money. There was trash, there was complaints. Short-term rentals, we made more money, we were able to control the property. It, it was a better move. So yes, there is a balance that's very hard to hit, and I just wanted to bring that forward.
And Michael?
Well, well, Murf, my hit on some of what I was going to ask about. What, Martha, nice presentation, by the way. What, what were the majority of the complaints addressed at? Was it noise? Was it parking? What exactly did you hear from the community about the complaints?
Wow, how long do we have? There, there was a wide range. We heard lots and lots of very strong feelings on lots of different sides of this issue. And so the predominant neighborhood-type complaints were about noise, were about parties, overcrowding, lots of cars blocking the road, things like that. Fires, we heard actually a lot about fires up on the mountain during no-burn times, particularly, there's concern about that. On the flip side, we've also heard a lot from folks who think that this is just their property, right? That they should be allowed to rent on a short-term basis and not be regulated, and that these aren't causing a problem. And they've been renting for a number of years and have never had any complaints. And so there's a lot of strong opinions and a lot of different opinions and ideas about this subject.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other raised hands.
Yeah, what would happen, you know, short-term rentals are defined as 30 days. So what happens if the same occupants who are renting just continue to stay on? Does that, you know, what would happen? In other words, what would be the whole ramifications of that?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute. There really wouldn't be any ramifications for most dwelling units because we don't regulate whether or not the long-term occupant of the dwelling is a renter or an owner. I guess there potentially could be ramifications if it was in a guest house because we still wouldn't, at least at this time, allow the rental of a guest house to a long-term occupant. And so that could become a violation that code enforcement would have to enforce on.
What about the tax, the transient tax?
Well, the transient tax is a self-reporting tax, and I don't, I'm not, I don't know a whole lot about it. But you report your income a number of nights, is my understanding, and so they would report their tax. And I think that it would be collected. I'm not sure it would have an impact on the transient tax, except that if you are renting your property on a long-term basis, you don't have to pay the transient tax.
So in other words, you could have people stay 31 or 32 days and then that, or, or something like that, you know, 40 days, and get out of paying the tax?
Well, I suppose you could. I don't know how realistic of a business model that is, but somebody might do that, yeah.
Just, just wondering what, what would happen if, you know, because I think short-term rental could be a couple of months. It doesn't have, you know, I mean, that's short-term compared to years and years of like a regular residence.
Well, that's true, and we had to draw the line somewhere, and 30 days seems to be the general consensus around the region for the way other short-term rentals are regulated. And I believe, I might misspeak, I believe there's something that talks about 30 days in the transient room tax rules.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. I don't know what happens if you have somebody who thinks they're staying, you know, 29 days and then decides to stay 35 days. Whether, you know, that somehow the accounting takes care of that between the, you know, proprietor and the, and the county finance department who's administering the transient lodging tax. We just don't know those details, but 30 days does seem to be the magic number.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I'm not seeing any other hands up, and I thought I would go ahead and move forward. I, I think we still have opportunities to ask questions as we go along. All right, the next part to this is have we received any correspondence on this matter other than those items included in the meeting packets? And I do believe Darcy sent one out from a Mr. Dennis Tykla. Tyka, and I hope everyone received the email and letter. So do we stop at this point and discuss that? Or, or do we wait until there's a guest speaker? Or I, I guess, did everybody receive it? Maybe that's the point. Yes, Michael?
I received it, but I, I guess it was mistaken on the date. It says 11/23/2013, at least on my copy. Is that what's, should that have been in 2020? Or was this an old complaint or notification seven years ago?
Well, I would assume that's a typo. It was received today via email. And I believe that Mr. Tykla, I may be saying that incorrect, is in the audience and may testify today, and maybe you could clarify that. But I think it's just a typo.
Darcy, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We will know that when we get to the public testimony portion.
Okay, so we're not signing up in advance?
Okay, I'm, was there any other correspondence other than the letter we received, Darcy?
Oh, no, there was not.
Okay, and Murf, did you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on Dennis Tilka's letter that he sent, that this is something I kind of hit on also was, what does this do to the value of neighborhoods? With the increase of short-term rentals, like in my neighborhood, for instance. They're taking off here. I'm starting to see more and more of them. Right now, during the pandemic, it's kind of quieted down a little bit, but they are still very active. So does the value of the neighborhood go up to the assessor? Because these are now commercial properties that are earning prop, earning an income. That's a concern of local residents, or at least a concern of ours. Are we going to be taxed for a property that could possibly be an income property? And what are the effects to school districts? If you have a considerable amount of short-term rentals in these areas. I think these are important notes to take a look at, but at this time, I don't think it's enough to stop what our goals are today, so.
And I would guess what Martha said, that Mr. Tykla should, will possibly be testifying, and, and we may speak to some of those points.
Right.
Okay, very good. Let's move then into, are there any other government agencies here to provide technical information related to this proposal? Please use the raise hand feature if you're in the audience and wish to testify on behalf of a government agency. Darcy, is there anyone in the audience who has raised their hand? Okay, are there any questions from the commission? Let's see. No, I'm not sure where that one's here. I think that's if there was a government agency. Okay, moving along. All right, are there any representatives of community planning organizations or hamlets here to speak? Each organization will have 10 minutes to testify. Do you see any, Darcy, Hamlet or CPO? No. Okay. Let me skip down. No, does any other person wish to speak on this proposal? Each person will have three minutes to testify. Please use the raise hand feature if you are in the audience and wish to testify. Darcy, do you see any of our attendees' hands raised?
Yes, I have Dennis Tilka.
Wonderful. Would you bring him on, or maybe Garrett can do that?
I've brought him over, but there we go.
Can you hear me okay now?
We can. We want to see your letter, and we want to thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Of course. Will you give us the proper pronunciation so we?
Tilka, like an I, T. It's TY, but it's pronounced TI. I mean, like Tilka.
Oh, Tilka, very good. Thank you.
Okay, what I would encourage you to do is to tread very slowly on this. You could be opening a Pandora's box. Because I don't know how many times I heard, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. And it could be like a Lyft, Uber situation where there's consequences you will not understand until this proliferates and see how detrimental it could be to communities. I myself am a victim of short-term rentals. I have seven houses on my street, and three of them are short-term rentals. But another thing I was worried about is how is this going to affect the census count? Is, I was talking to a census lady the other day, and they were going around, and short-term rentals are classified as vacant, and there's no residence. So how is that going to affect how much money that comes into our community? Especially in our, maybe it won't affect Clackamas County, but it could affect Mount Hood specifically. That's another thing I was worried about. And I wish the county would regulate short-term rentals with the zeal that they did marijuana production. Is really look at precise language and deal with it almost on a case-by-case, almost as a conditional use. I think it should be a conditional use. Because if anything, if you were a novice and you're reading through the zoning ordinance, and you seen, looked up like residential zoning, and it says dwelling, you wouldn't think to go back and look at what is a dwelling. You would look at, it should be classified as a primary use. Short-term rentals as a primary use or a conditional use permit. It shouldn't be definitions. That's like saying that I want to open a toxic waste dump or a prostitution house. Instead of going and trying to work that into as a primary use, I just try to get you to change dwelling units to include prostitution houses. And I'm trying to be quick, but finally, when you say there's no enforcement, there is no enforcement now. But that wouldn't preclude an individual from going to a circuit court or to Luba and seeking the county to enforce the ordinance and say this use is a prohibitive use, and would disallow it. And there would be no short-term rentals. So I'm for regulating them, but I think it should be more precise, and it shouldn't be just a little housekeeping rule. Do you have any questions? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm done. Can you, okay, do you have?
We have a question from Michael.
Dennis, Dennis, excuse me, using your first name, and I don't think I can pronounce your last name. You indicated that you're on seven of the three, three of the seven personally, you know, you personally know that they're using them for short-term rental. Have you had any specific complaints against those
Yes.
three individuals? And, and what were they?
Is noise, cars. And when the cars, not only did they have people staying over the night, overnight, they were, one was a wedding, and one was just like a family reunion. So maybe only 15 people were staying in the house, or whatever the number was in the house, but there had to be almost 100 people there during the day. And there had to be, I can't even tell you how many counts of cars I did. And each time that one would leave, there would be several leaving and several coming back. So that would be another thing, is to limit how many people could actually be on the property at any one time, not just how many people could stay overnight.
So, so did, did you make a complaint to the Clackamas County Sheriff? Or, and, and was there any resolution to that? Or is, is it the same people doing this, or it's all three of them doing this?
Well, I've had big parties at all three, but the biggest one I had was I called the company that was managing it, and they said they'd take care of it. And they didn't take care of it. The police did end up showing because there was a fight. Another neighbor called them because of the fight. And then finally, I called the owner, and the owner came up the next day and kicked them all out and changed the locks. Because the rental company came up and told them to stop it, and it kicked a bunch of them out. But then the next day, they all showed up again. So that's when I called the property owner, and they came up and changed the locks and kicked them out.
I see. Now, Martha, Martha, how, how, how would, how would the, this be approached with our new regulations and, and approval of the zoning changes? Would there be any resolution for Mr. Tykla's complaint here?
Well, that's a complicated question. There's not a resolution in the zoning code amendments. But the short-term rental registration and regulation program that has been drafted and is under consideration for the county code is intended to help resolve some of these issues. And I can say that in no case, under the new regulations, if they're adopted, or under anything currently, are homes allowed to be used as event venues. That is a violation that we do enforce on. There, well, I, I guess, I shouldn't say they're not allowed to, but there is a land use process they could go through with their zoning code if they were to use it as an event venue. Running a short-term rental does not allow you to be an event venue. It would simply allow the short-term rental. I would encourage Mr. Tykla to attend the Board of County Commissioners hearing because I think there are very precise regulations written into that program that may be adopted into the county code. And it would help address some of these issues. All right, go ahead, I'm done talking, sorry.
Would, would, would a, a, a situation like this encourage the, the, the county to revoke the use of these properties for short-term rental rentals?
Well, there's a process, and there is a revocation process. And I don't know off the top of my head, you know, what the steps are to get to that point. But there's certain steps and, and types and numbers of violations that you'd have to go, go through and have to be proven with evidence before a revocation could happen. But yes, that there, there's fines and fees and revocation processes for violations written into the county code amendments.
And these, these solutions are available online for individuals that have experienced something like this?
I'm not sure what you mean by the solutions are available online.
Well, I, what I mean is, would this gentleman know, be able to log on to the county site and find out how to a, a, address for his complaint, particularly with, with this situation, with the appropriate authorities?
Well, I, I would hope so. The intent of the program, if it is adopted, is to provide the resources also. And so I guess we envisioned there would be a website set up that, and that explains the short-term rental program and has links to the applications and various things. I mean, but that's down the road. And quite frankly, that's not going to be housed in planning. It's going to be up to a different department to set that program up.
Brian?
Well, thank you, Martha. I, I think that's an important point that needs to be made and provided to our citizens.
So what I heard Mr. Tilka testify is that it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily, the unit wasn't being used as an event space. The problem was the, a large number of guests related to that event were at the unit, right? And I guess the question I have is this 15-person cap, does that only refer to the people who are renting the unit, or is that anyone occupying the presence at any particular time?
So in the county code amendments, it is specifically overnight occupancy.
And you could have 30 people show up. And, and, you know, arguably, it would be under the, you know, large gathering ordinance, but the reality is it couldn't be regulated.
That's true. Just like you or I could have a really big dinner party or birthday party for 50 people in our house, and it's currently not regulated.
The difference being, though, that we're accountable to our neighbors. Someone staying overnight isn't, right? And that becomes a pretty significant problem. It's clearly a problem, and the question is, is it going to be addressed neither the zoning ordinance or ours?
So I can tell you it's not addressed in the zoning ordinance. This is a conversation that was had several times with the Board of County Commissioners, and currently, the way the code amendments are drafted, it does not include a cap on the number of guests or other people that the overnight occupants can have on the property. That's not something that they chose to pursue in the county code amendments. Again, it's something that somebody could testify to at the board hearing, but it's currently not written in those regulations.
Well, it's also exacerbated by the fact that we allow, we got rid of the owner-occupant piece, right? Because then it allows for these large management properties disconnected from anyone in the community managing these things. It's just a very different, you create a very different atmosphere when it's not the direct owner offering up their guest house versus a third-party company. I can, I'm starting to see why that's a pretty significant problem.
More questions for Mr. Tilka? Michael?
I have a comment or concern. I want to direct it to Murf. You awake?
Oh, yeah, I'm awake. You betcha.
How do you, how do you think these comments would, are there any effect of these comments in your particular area? You live up in that particular area. Have you seen anything like this?
Oh, yeah. I live in a neighborhood that each lot is one-sixth of an acre, so we're pretty close to each other. And directly behind me is a home that rents, and most of the time, the people are very polite, and by 10 o'clock, they're in. Sometimes you can tell they've been out playing all day, drinking beer most of the night, and, you know, 12, 1 o'clock at night, they're still out there having a good time. And I know the guy next door that has little kids has to get up. I, I'm awake. You hear dogs barking, you know, and that's just one house. There's a couple more in my neighborhood that are going through these same issues. So I know Dennis personally, a small community up here. I know he testified during our flood maps when we were going to make recommendations to the county. One of the questions I have for Dennis is, if they have 100 people there, they're not on a sewer system. How does that affect your well, Dennis?
That was one of the things I put recommendations before to the county commissioners is for septic tanks and wells, they should prove that they have the ability to handle 15 people. And how many of the wells up here, how many of the houses up here, you cannot drink the water? So, I mean, that's a safety issue. I mean, that's a really big issue. But yes, and a lot of these houses that are being rented are old houses that the septic tanks are ancient, and you put this huge demand on these septic tanks, you're going to have leaks coming up through the ground.
Yeah.
I agree. That's what I'm saying, is we're opening Pandora's box, and I definitely would limit how many that can be in a neighborhood. And what I mean a neighborhood is, the county has a definition of what neighborhoods are, so you could limit how many are in each neighborhood. And I would put a time period on that have it renewed. I mean, did you come back and go through these regulations again and see what needs to be added or subtracted or whatever? But can I say one more thing, too, is when we were talking about affordable housing, is that a question of affordable housing in the Mount Hood area anymore? There is no housing to rent, no matter what the prices are anymore, because they've all been converted.
Let me ask both you and Murf a question, Dennis. What would be the economic impact on your community if you didn't have these short-term rentals? I'm sure they're bringing funds into your community. They're buying stuff. They're, they're, you know, they're adding to your community, and I know there's a trade-off at some point with that. But how best could you do that and do both? You know, reduce the impact environmentally and whatever, but also improve the economy of the local area?
I would say most of the short-term rentals right now are taking shares away from the resort at the mountain. There's big condominium projects there, and instead of going to those condominiums, they're going to short-term rentals because it's less expensive. And the resort at the mountain has suffered economically, it's been changed hands numerous times over the last few years. I'm not saying I have proof that it's that reason, but there is, they're having a hard time surviving, I know that much. And then government camp has numerous, like hotels, condos. And I have nothing against those being used for short-term rentals, because they have no neighbors, basically, the way it's set up. So I don't think it would make that big a difference to us, to tell you the truth.
And if you're asking me, Michael, I see it benefits the neighborhood. It definitely benefits the businesses. But the workers that work at these businesses are having to travel long distances to get to work. There's nothing affordable for them to just go home to within a couple miles. So affordable housing is getting further and further away from areas that need high quantities of it as the tourist trade comes up. I, you know, if you're in government camp and you have a short-term rental, you're probably going to be able to use that home a few times a year and afford that, because that's a very expensive place to live. To have that short-term rental allows you to own one, and I think that's a big plus. And we heard people testify during these town halls that they, they could only live in the home that they have by renting out part of that as a short-term rental, and I think that's a a major issue to look at. Where would they be otherwise? So I, no, I, short-term rentals need to stay, but we need to be able to have a grip on them, in my opinion.
Did I say something else?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Dennis.
Is also, a community needs a critical mass of residents to have a school, to have a church, to have a doctor, to have a dentist. And as I mentioned before, our Welch's School has lost 40% of its population in nine years. You couldn't find any other school in Oregon that's lost population like that, as far as I know of. So at what point, as these houses get switched, turned over, you lose full-time residents and the replacement short-term? Is a doctor going to be able to afford to stay up here? Is he going to have enough patients? Is, that's what I'm getting at. Is a school going to have to close down because it's going to lose all of its students? So we do have to worry about that, too. We have to have a a base, a basic, a full-time residence. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Tilka? Okay, Mr. Tilka, thank you, not just for your letter, but for all your time and hanging in there with us. Are you, you're aware that of the Board of County Commissioners's hearing on December 9th? Is that right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good. Good. And I hope you'll have an opportunity to talk with the board then. All right, let's move along again. Thank you, Mr. Tilka. Darcy, do either of the other two attendees, whether that be KPTV News or Pascal Stig? Have any questions this evening?
I don't see any hands up.
Okay, okay. Very good. All right. I think I, unless, if there's any consideration for holding this hearing open, I think we can, are there any final comments?
I think a hand just popped up.
Oh, oh, my. Well, there we go.
Looks like.
Good eye, Jennifer. Do you want to ask Pascal Stig to join?
Pascal Stig?
I think so. Pascal, yes. And Pascal is on mute.
Hello?
Hi. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Welcome this evening. Thank you for joining us and for making a comment. So the floor is yours.
Well, I don't have much to say. This is relatively interesting to follow. But I want to say, keep in mind that many of, many people are struggling financially because of the virus. You know, and this, when you keep it within reason, and I'm not talking about the party house, obviously, but this is something that is very, that is critical, actually, for people who don't have any employment and don't have any unemployment benefits. It's, it's really something that is critical at this moment, so keep that in mind, please. You know, I just want to say that. And my big concern is the fee, because I remember one meeting where the sum of $900 was mentioned. That is astronomical for somebody who would have just one room that they would occasionally rent out. It's just an amazing, an amazing amount of money. So maybe there might be, it might be a valid reason to look into a sliding scale. You know, if you have something that you have, if you rent out a house every, I don't know, all the time, and you have 15 people, like you're mentioning, by all means, but if it's just one person that has a little room on the side, and that's once in a while, I don't know how they could even pay that fee. It's not sustainable. Anyway, thank you very much.
Were there any questions?
No, I mean, no, I'm just very, this is an issue that I'm very interested in, and that, thank you for letting me know. I got an email about this meeting, so definitely something that I want to know how this is going to evolve.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. Sincerely appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're moving into closing the hearing.
Chair Stevens, can I ask for a five-minute break before we move to the next section?
Boy, I did really hang everybody out to dry. If everybody will mute, and then we'll meet back here at, let's say, 5 after 8. We're back, and do we need to wait for Darcy and Garrett to put us back live?
We are live again.
Okay, very good. Recording and.
Excuse me, Tammy. I don't think you actually closed the public hearing. I'm not sure.
I have not. No, you're right. I have not.
Okay.
On my list.
That's fine. I just didn't know if.
I mean, I think we still ask questions, but I just wanted to make sure that the majority of those questions were answered before we close, because, I mean, we still can hear from planning. Okay, I do believe we are at that point there now, so the public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Are there any further questions of staff from the Planning Commission? Please use the raise-hand Zoom feature, or simply raise your hand if it's not too busy. And let's see, and then after we do some final questions, we'll move toward the open discussion.
I have a question for both Jennifer and Martha. Adopting these ordinances and changes in our planning, whatever. What is going to be the bottom-line impact on the person that owns that property? Is it going to help them as far as increasing their income? Or is it going to create a situation where they're going to have more economic problems?
Well, I don't think there's a single answer to that. Allowing someone to run a short-term rental out of their house could potentially allow them to generate more income. And I'm not sure how it would cause someone more economic problems, but I think that it's not a simple, it's not, it's, it's not an either-or. It would certainly provide opportunity for folks to make more income. There, I suppose, would potentially be some negative impacts to them economically, although I'm not quite certain what they are. Maybe Jennifer can bail me out here.
I mean, I think from the, just the zoning ordinance piece, which is what you're primarily focused on tonight, I would say it's economic upside or no change for individual property owners, because they're either not going to rent because they have no interest in it and have never wanted to. They're already doing it, and this isn't really going to change anything, but it gives them certainty that what they're doing is allowed. Or some people may choose to pursue this now, where they didn't before, and it would provide some income for them. So I think it's more of a, the economic impact is either neutral or beneficial to property owners interested in doing this. If you're looking for sort of the downside, it's the neighborhood impacts that we've discussed. But as we kind of said, the reality is they're already all out there anyway, and there hasn't been any real significant enforcement going on, so it probably doesn't result in much change. It's true, though, that if they're prohibited, the county could choose to enforce in the future, so that would go away if you say that they're permitted. As far as economic downside for short-term rental operators, that would be more about the county code piece, because there are regulations that they would need to comply with, although I don't think they are particularly burdensome. But the fee is the issue, and that's the argument that we've heard, I think, in opposition, is that if the registration program is adopted and there's a fee adopted, then that is an economic impact to people who run these short-term rentals.
Okay, well, let me, let me put a hypothetical out there. I know that's crazy to do this, but let me put a hypothetical out there. I have relatives that were living in Atlanta, and when the world, the Olympics came there, they rented out some of their property, et cetera, for the short-term type stuff while the Olympics were there. Let's say, you know, we get a chance to have a Winter Olympics here, and we have an opportunity for that in that particular area up there, Mount Hood and Welch's and whatever. Would some of these things we're putting in place right now create a major impact on those citizens that want to make a significant? increase in their, their income because of that? Or will we have to have extra regulations and ordinances passed in order for that to happen?
I mean, I think along the lines with what Jennifer said is that by allowing this, if a scenario like that were to happen, then homeowners would be allowed to rent their houses out for, for whatever the event is. In not allowing it, I guess there would potentially be a hurdle for homeowners to rent their properties out as they're potentially is currently, if, if it were going to be something that was enforced.
Mer.
I was wondering, would it be possible to have a sunset clause on these amendments for review? After a year perhaps, or two years to see if they need fine tuning? Since we are, this is the first try at trying to put in some kind of a zoning regulation in this field. I'm just throwing that out there.
Would it be possible? Yes, I mean, I think it would be possible. We have not historically done much in terms of sunset clauses. They do those at state legislature semi often. The only example I think we've had was the transitional shelter communities for the Vets Village that some of you will remember in the industrial zone that had a sunset clause, and those regulations no longer exist in our code, but the one site was developed. The, one of the, I mean, there's an administrative downside to it, but bottom line, if you put a certain, a date certain, it's pretty easy for us to track that. What it does, though, is create a whole bunch of non-conforming uses. So right now there is this uncertainty, frankly. There's an uncertainty in our code because our code is silent on it. It's uncertain whether short-term rentals are permitted or not.
Right.
Our, our sort of policy opinion for probably the last at least five years has been, no, they're not. But, you know, if somebody wanted to push that, who knows what a court would ultimately determine? Once we say it's allowed and then take it away, anything, any of them that were, are, you know, that are kind of already there, right? That then they've become legal by virtue of this change, and any new ones established would all be non-conforming uses. That is an administrative burden for the county to sort of track those and to deal with, you know, did they use laps? Did it not lapse? So I, I tend to not be a big proponent of
Okay.
of sunset clauses, and particularly when it's something that has, you know, there might be a thousand of them. It's one thing if there's one, like with the transitional shelter communities. So I wouldn't advocate it for it, but you asked me if it's possible, and I think the answer is yes, it's possible.
Would you recommend a review period after a year? That's not a sunset, so to speak, but it does take a look at what's happening. Could this be a condition upon our recommendations?
Sure. Oh, go ahead, Martha.
Well, I guess my question would be, what are we reviewing? And so if this isn't allowed use, there's no tracking mechanism, there's no land use application. So we don't know if making these changes absent the county code amendments will actually change anything. We don't know if there are more that are operating after a year because we don't really have a way of tracking it. If there, if the county code amendments are adopted, we would at least have some, some threshold to be able to understand what's going on and track and know how much code enforcement is happening. I don't think we would have good data within a year, but certainly within a couple of years.
May I make one more point, too, that I was thinking, if this is not an acceptable practice in the county, could this be challenged by a bank for a loan or by an insurance company for coverage? Saying that your activity is not legal, so to speak? So is, would that be a reason in itself to make sure that we pass this tonight? Or recommend to pass?
So I think you raise a good point. I'm not aware of any time that it has been challenged, but I, I think it's a possibility.
Following on with what Mer said, with, with this regard to a review, it may be a good idea and, and take a look in a couple of years. How many complaints have we had? How many, you know, what has been the, the, the revenue that's come in to the, to the county from the, you know, fees, et cetera? Is it cost effective for us to continue with that?
Tom?
Yeah, I have a, another question. I'm, I'm curious. And I, I think you've mentioned this in the memo. I'm curious how other, of any of the cities within the county are dealing with this issue? And is our proposed amendment consistent with how various cities are approaching the issue?
So early on in the project, we did a lot of research about what other cities in Oregon and other counties in Oregon were doing with respect to short-term rentals, and it varies. There are some cities that heavily regulate short-term rental properties. There are some that do not. There are most of the counties do not. A lot of them are in the same boat that, that we are, where their code is silent about it. There are a few counties that regulate, and we've actually, we modeled the program after one or two of the counties who had set up the program similar to what we were doing and, and create this licensing or registration program through the county code rather than through a land use application. And so what we try to do when we research and create a program is, is talk to people and figure out what's working and what's not, and pull the good pieces that other people have in their codes and put them into our proposal. And so that was what was attempted. I think that there are some cities out there that are doing a really good job. Off the top of my head, I want to say Bend. They have a really good website. They seem to have a pretty comprehensive program. It's a little, it's more complicated than what we're proposing here. You know, but cities and counties are a little bit different. And I know that Milwaukee has some regulations. I'm not sure about all of the cities in Clackamas County. But I don't think that anything we have proposed is groundbreaking, earth-shattering, new. We really try to use the pieces that are working for others and try to make them work for us.
I would be interested in finding out what, you know, things like Seaside, Cannon Beach, those particular areas seem to attract a lot of vacationers. Bend is a good one, you know, with, with Mount Bachelor. So, you know, those probably have more of an impact than say like down out in the Netherlands, out in eastern Oregon where there's nothing but cow country. So, you know, they probably have no interest at all.
Well, and a lot of the coastal cities do have regulations, and they have, they have similar but different issues. And several of the cities that we looked at, the percentage of the housing stock that was short-term rentals was upwards of, you know, a quarter to a third of the housing. So there were concerns about that there. We here in Clackamas County are looking at maybe one and a half percent of our housing. And so certainly neighborhood impacts, things like that are similar. We did pull pieces of regulations from coastal cities, but to some extent, they are, they're, they're different. Their market is different and their, some of their concerns are different than what we have here.
Yes, Tom?
I would say that the problem you have with Clackamas County is you've got, you're, you kind of got all of the issues of the state in one county. So you have an area like Government Camp in Mount Hood, just like the coast, where the proportion of rental property is different than the rest of the county, which is primary, you know, they're small, small towns, they're not necessarily, necessarily tourist destinations, or they're large urban areas. So the challenge I see with, with this is unlike a city, is the city has its own unique situation. You're trying to do something that's encompassing for such a wide variety and, and different types of areas with different concerns. So I could see where it'd be challenging to come up with something that's going to work well for everybody. Just like the state has problems with this constant tension between urban and rural. We have the same thing in Clackamas County. And so I see that's part of the challenge.
Okay, if there, let's get any final questions. Carrie, just a sec. Final questions for planning and then what we'll do, and what I'm hoping, Martha, while we're getting the final questions in, is maybe you can be able to pull up those four points that you came up with on the decision-making so that as we go through our discussion and our deliberation, we can kind of look at it, maybe refer to it. That was a really helpful slide. So Carrie, you had a question?
It's unmuted. Sorry about that. Yes. So I know this has been going on for quite a while, long before I joined the commission. So I feel a little bit awkward asking questions of how can we change things? And, you know, I don't know, maybe it's past that point, but consistently it seemed like there's been a couple of themes that's been coming up in discussion. One of 15 people limit of staying overnight, I, you know, that seems to be an issue that has been, both reading of the documents that's been provided, as well as some of the communications that we've been having, seems to be an issue, and whether that number is a, a firm number and therefore cannot be changed, or, you know, somehow making some sort of different restrictions such that it allows for something other than just overnight stays. So that's one question. And then the other thing is the comment that came at the, towards the end of public comments, and that is, what is the opportunity for sliding scale fees? You know, if, if you truly only have one room that you're renting out, as opposed to 3,000 square foot house that you're renting out to a party of 15? You know, is there an opportunity to have a sliding scale fees that would be more appropriate for some of the smaller properties that they're looking for short-term rental, rental situation? So I, again, I don't know, you know, where we are in the process of this particular ordinance to say whether things can change or not, or whether it's, you know, take this or, or take it or not, or leave it kind of a situation. So I'm just asking some questions that I've heard throughout the, you know, last couple of weeks ago, as well as today. And, and trying to see if there's some, some things that we can change with our recommendations today, so.
So the first one, the 15 people is the maximum that are allowed in a dwelling. And so that's what our code has now, and that's why we in the zoning code amendments put that language in there to be, to, to make sure that it still applies if you're using your residence as a short-term rental versus a long-term rental or owner occupied. There is a, there is a difference in the regulations in the county code. As they are drafted now, there is actually a maximum overnight occupancy that you calculate based on the number of bedrooms that are in, in a dwelling. And so for a short-term rental, there, there would possibly be a cap that's lower than the 15. Like, for example, if you had a two-bedroom house, the calculation's based on two people per bedroom plus four additional. And so you wouldn't be allowed to register your short-term rental for more than, and advertise it for more than eight overnight guests. That's in the county code amendments. And if the board chooses to adopt it, that, that would be, those would be the regulations that a, an operator of a short-term rental would have to comply with. I don't think since the code amendments that we're making in the zoning code that we're talking about today are really just to clarify that you can use your residence as that. It is not attempting to add any additional regulations to the short-term rental. Those would all be housed in the county code. And so there, I don't think that at this point it would make sense to make a change to the zoning code amendments because that would be handled through the county code. The fee question is more difficult. Nothing that we are doing here today is recommending a fee or a fee schedule. The fee conversation has been a difficult one with the board, and the board is going to have to decide what they are going to do about the fee. Is there an opportunity for sliding scale? Yes. But the board has made it very clear to us that if we are going to adopt the short-term rental registration program, it needs to be fully funded by the fee. And so to the extent they reduce the fee for somebody, they could potentially be increasing it for someone else. That may be a choice they decide to make. I don't know where they're going to land on the fee conversation. That is definitely still ongoing and will not be resolved even this month or next month.
Mary, you had a question?
Yeah, Martha, was that 15-person limit in the ZDO right now, or is it in the county code right now?
15-person limit is in the ZDO for a dwelling.
Okay, where is that? I don't see it in the definitions section.
It is in the definitions section. So I'm going to go down a nerdy, the nerdy route with Mary right now.
Surprise, surprise.
So a dwelling unit refers to a family, and then you go under F to family. And a family is defined as up to 15 related or unrelated persons living as in, as a housekeeping unit.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Why is this not based upon the square footage of the facility? If somebody had a 10,000 square foot residence or a 6,000 square foot resident, why are we limiting them to 15 people?
So that limit on a dwelling unit is something that has been in the code for a mighty long time. And I don't honestly know where it came from. I'm sure Jennifer, or maybe Jennifer does.
I mean, we have, we have bigger residents now than what we may have had 20 years ago.
So that the history is a bit of an, you know, sort of urban legend at this point. I don't know exactly who the, all of it went into the deliberations. It was actually, believe it or not, again, something else that was before my time. But it has its roots in fair housing law, and it was really more about local governments, essentially through zoning codes, trying to tell people who their family was. And that's really what it came down to. And it was about us not, as a government, being able to say who you can live with and call a family. And so it, it, our definition became very expansive and it's, you know, unrelated or related, you know, we don't control that, up to 15 living together. And then it goes on to talk about as a housekeeping unit and gets quite complex about what that really means to be a family. And anyway, you can go down a lot of rabbit holes on this discussion, but that's the reason. I've always wondered if somebody had like, you know, you were a couple and you had like 14 kids, would we really make one of them move out? And I mean, I think the answer's no, but, but still.
There's 14 kids, one would have been moved out by them.
So that's, you know, that's, the, the roots are there, and it's really about the government not getting involved. And, but the bottom line is at some point you're overloading a single-family dwelling. And partly it's about the size of the house, and partly it's about the cars and the noise and the everything else, right? And we are really trying to I'm going to, again, I'm going to nerd out a little bit here, but it's these short-term rental regulations are not intended to be land use regulations. They are deliberately business regulations, which is why they're going into the county code. And it's why they don't get subject to things like non-conforming use law. It's business regulations. And so on the land use side, we need to try to make these amendments as consistent as possible with what our code already says to not inadvertently somehow make something more restrictive than it already is. And that's the reason that we crafted it the way that we did. We're trying to make it, a dwelling is a dwelling is a dwelling, 15, 15, 15, no matter how you're living in it.
I appreciate that, and I, I certainly understand it. I, I just question why we have certain I've just questioned why we have certain limits on what we have and how they were developed and and what their purpose was. So thank you very much.
Murph, you had a question?
Yes, I do. We didn't, I haven't heard accessory dwelling unit mentioned at all tonight. So will that go under code only? I mean, there'll be no zoning regulation on accessory dwelling units. They'll be different than guest house, I take it. But is that something that it'll be handled by code only?
No, a dwelling, it is a dwelling unit and therefore it can be used. If if the ZDO amendments are approved, it would be allowed to be used as a short term rental.
Regardless of owner living in the primary structure or vice versa?
If only the zoning code amendments are passed, that's true.
Okay.
If the county code amendments are passed, there will be additional regulations.
All right, thanks.
Okay, if everybody's questions are answered, what we'll move into is can you put up, Martha, your your list of decision ideas? And so we'll go down the kind of discussion slash deliberation. And what I'd like to do is just ask each person where they're sitting in the decision making process, their final concerns. And then I'm looking at Mary, she may not see me. Hopefully, Mary will be taking a few notes along those lines. So is there anybody wants to raise their hand to go first? Oh, Mary, please go first.
That's why you're looking at me in the first place, not for notes, but I can do both. So I I I'm glad you asked for the slide to go up. I think we kind of have two discussions going. One is the question before us, which is really the land use question of do we want to clarify in our code that these are allowed? Or do we want to leave it ambiguous? I think for me, I'll just, yes, I think it's worth clarifying in the code that it is allowed. I think that we all do very care very much about how it's allowed and what are the regulations around them. And that's what the other part of the discussion is really about. But I don't think that's our purview. That's not how it's set up. I appreciate all of the comments we've been getting and the discussion we've been having. And I don't know if we somehow want to capture anything as a so here's our motion about what's before us. And then we might have a recommendation for considerations that the county commissioners might want to take up. But as far as what's before us for basically allowing the use, I'll nerd out a little bit too, just like staff. Personally, I don't like it being in the definitions because my personal preference is not to regulate by definition. But after hearing all the discussion about how everything else is set up in the code and why the family is defined the way it is, I'm I'm satisfied that this is a nice, clear way to do it. It fits within the code and it meets the goals of the project. So I'm personally in favor of supporting staff's recommendation as written.
Thank you, Mary, and who would like to go next? I see Tom's hand up.
I'm I'm in agreement with Mary. I I guess if I were to look at the four options, I would go number two. I think it's it's important that we at least define and acknowledge that this is happening. I don't think the zoning codes are the way to try to regulate or figure out how you deal with these other issues that are, that's really something that the commissioners need to address in the code. But I, but at the same time, people are doing it. It's going to continue. Why not at least be on record as to how you would define it? So at least for people who are considering it, they have a place to go to know, yes, this is, I can do this or no, I can't. So I'm 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 supporting the staff recommendation, regardless of whether they, the county adopts a code or not. I think it's something you ought to add to the books.
Michael, did you want to go next?
Yes. I'm against any regulations that restrict the use of private property. I think personal property should be up to the owner of that property. So my my recommendation is that we look at these regulations or amendments to any county code to be so that it allows the personal property owner to exercise his his or her rights and the use of that property. So long as it does not, it does not adversely affect their residents adjacent to them. We're not supposed to be here to direct or dictate how somebody is to use their personal property. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else volunteering to step up? I think Murph's next.
Yes, I agree with Mary and Tom. I respect Michael's opinion. But going to the to one of the town halls and watching all the the videos on this and being a part of this, I agree, I go with number two approval. Whether or not we go to code on this, I think we need to be clear that this is acceptable practice, especially on this end of Clackamas County. This is a, this is people's income in this particular area. And I would not want to take that away or bring doubt to it. And I think it should be insured and there should be bank loans available because I think in one way or another, that's going to affect it. But anyway, I'm with the approval on this. And I really appreciate this conversation we had. Martha, awesome job.
Thank you, Murph, very much. Louise, Carrie, or Brian? Anybody volunteering? I think I think Carrie, oh, Carrie got up and then and then we'll do Louise after Carrie.
So I I guess I'm in agreement with most of the commissioners' comments. I so I I am in support of option number two that's on the on the screen. I would strongly, I, whenever we talk about a program paying for itself, that's just the code for, in my mind, code for additional revenues that may may not be sufficient to run the program. I'm really hesitant. I would really, you know, I understand that it's not our job to figure out what the cost of this program is going to be. But I would strongly recommend the the staff and the board consider reviewing what the true cost of administering this program is in a few years, if that's what's necessary. And and go back and, you know, look at a fair price for doing the program, administering the program rather than having a blanket cost for, you know, small, big and and medium altogether. So allowing for some customization that would be fair to property owners that are, you know, looking to get additional revenue from their use of their property. So I I guess I'm in favor of approving the the ordinance, but I would just request that staff and the board consider sliding scale fees and and not necessarily a blanket fee. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Carrie, very much. Louise?
My initial leaning was toward option number three, but I can live with option number two. I have concern about the environmental impact, like Murph was talking about, homes on only a sixth of an acre and they're all on well and septic. There is no way those homes were initially intended for 15 people in each one all the time. And you could have a short term rental that was rented literally every 30 days to 15 people. The well water can't, you know, keep up with that, neither can the septic system. And, you know, the whole 15 people thing, you know, to me is an issue because if you live in a studio apartment, you can't have 15 people. But if you live in a 40,000 square foot mansion in West Lynn, you can have more than 15 people. So the whole 15 people is a very arbitrary figure that makes no sense at all to me. And again, the environmental impact on well, water and septic system is just ridiculous because again, I mean, I live in a four bedroom home on 75 acres and my well and septic can barely keep up with me and I'm one person. And I don't use them hardly at all. So, you know, I, again, I have real issues with the environmental impact of these 15 people and a and a very popular short short term rental like up the mountain that might be utilized all the time. So I definitely want more regulation. And I want allowances of numbers of people based on the true size of the property and the well and the septic capability. So, yeah, definitely number two for sure, but I'd like it more regulations.
Thank you, Louise, very, very insightful. And my Brian, you're being very shy this evening. So I'm quite, don't you be stealing my thunder. So go ahead.
Okay, now I think you can hear me, sorry. You know, I agree with what's been said. I don't know that I have a lot to add. I will say that throughout this, I I've been kind of having this feeling of a lot of this is above our pay grade. And and by that, I mean, you know, I think some of these questions around houselessness and the fee structure and and how it impacts communities are are sticky issues that are probably best meant for elected officials rather than us. You know, so I I think if we look at it from a land use perspective, the reality is that the uses that we're talking about, whether they're short term or long term, are the same. And at some point, you know, so from a land use perspective, I think it makes sense to move forward. I I think I I'm in agreement with with number two. That being said, I I think that maybe it should come with a strong advice that that this should really be passed with some sort of regulatory ordinance to, you know, because I think if you don't do that, we're kind of going to be in a world of hurt. And I hope that that we, maybe we can convey, you know, there's been some specific things mentioned tonight, whether it been, it's been the septic issues or the number of of people on a piece of property as opposed to just the occupants or the sliding scale fee. I I hope that the county commission will consider that as they move forward with an ordinance. But at the end of the day, I think that's their job and not ours. And our job is to approve a land use ordinance. And it, I I think it's very clear that we need to put something, you know, we need, we need clarification that this is an acceptable use in the county. And that's where we start.
Thank you, Brian. Well, that was exactly what I was going to say, wow. Actually, I mean, when this whole thing started, this has been going on and it's been going on a long time. And I really believe we've got to get our head out of the sand and get our arms around it. So I've been supportive of the process. However, I I do, I know I'm supportive of number two, but I too encourage regulation. Health, safety and livability has to be an important factor, not just people making money or being able to fill houses. So I'm really supportive of both and I really don't think I can add anything more than that. Mary, any chance you'd like to make a motion this evening?
I would may have a question. I I'm happy to make the motion. I want to know if we feel like we want to pass on any other we recommend the board considers with our motion.
Now, do we want to do a motion and and then follow it with please consider these? Or you you don't really want all these considerations in the motion, do you, Mary?
I'm very happy to do it separately. I think that's a cleaner way to do it.
I think so too. I think
Okay.
And then we'll follow it with these were our highest concerns and thoughts. And that thing that would be, if that's fine with Martha and Jennifer, that'd be great.
And I did take notes as requested. Okay, so I move that we approve file number ZDO dash 273 as recommended and based on the findings in the November 16th, 2020 staff report.
Seconded, okay. Any further discussion before we take the vote? All right, Darcy, would you call, oh, Murphy has a comment.
I I do have one clarity comment. My particular neighborhood is one sixth of an acre per lot, but we are also on a sewer system. So we don't have a crowd of septic tanks. Thank God. Yeah, otherwise we'd be a nightmare. I just wanted clarity, Louise.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought
No, that's okay.
House was on and you had septic and well.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, how about a roll call, Darcy?
Okay, Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Wilson?
You're muted.
No.
Commissioner Pascoe?
Aye.
Commissioner Pax?
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopes?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
And Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
That is seven to one in favor.
Very good, and no abstentions.
No.
All right, so now what we'd like to do is really try and get our arms around what we want the Board of County Commissioners to hear from us as our highest considerations, concerns. Mary, would you mind reading what you have on that list so far? And then we can either add to it or tweak it.
So what I have is that we would probably want to recommend that in their deliberations for what is in the county code, that they consider infrastructure impacts and capacity, particularly on sites with wells and or septics, that they look at the total number of people on a property, in particular to focus on any issues around health, safety and livability and that potentially build in in two years or so a review of the program in particular to look at cost and and potentially a sliding scale for the costs based on if the program is funding itself, et cetera.
Excellent. So you can either raise your hand or do a raise hand and add or modify anything to Mary's list.
I don't know, I have a a specific thing to add, but I I think my sentiment is maybe to encourage the the county commission to specifically to adopt some sort of regulatory ordinance simultaneously with the adoption of ZDO 273, right? So I, you know, I'm not going to say we should, you know, we've already approved this, right? I think our recommendation is a strong one that they should do both of these at the same time, is my opinion.
Can I jump in? And this is more of a procedural thing and Jennifer may have to also jump in. So the county code amendments are going to their second hearing on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday. And staff does a presentation. And as part of the presentation, we talk about the hearings process that has happened. We can at that point in time talk a little bit, I mean, not at length, about this hearing and some of the issues that came up. And these, this list of recommendations that you had talked about, that would just be staff presenting what happened. I don't think, and then and then when we go into the December 9th hearing for these ZDO amendments, we create a staff report and we, you know, identify these on paper. But the county code amendment will have, in theory, the decision will have already been made. And so I don't think there's really any other way to present this information to the board unless the Planning Commission were to decide to write some testimony and all agree to it and sign off and then submit it as regular testimony. and all agree to it and sign off and then submit it as regular testimony to the board, like, you know, any other member of the public. It would have to be, it would have to be in before the 10:00 AM hearing on Wednesday, though.
I having a summary of our conversation in your presentation. I mean, our, the list is pretty short. You can say the quick summary of the conversation. I think that would capture it. At least from my point of view, that would be enough.
Okay.
That, is that good enough or do we have to have something?
No, you don't have to.
Okay, okay. I wasn't quite clear.
You're just at the mercy of me articulating your thoughts.
That's what I envisioned was
Well, the meeting is recorded.
I know. I try not to misrepresent things.
I'm just curious, how does, how does that actually work? So the, the, the county commission is moving forward to adopt regulations on an, on something that isn't technically even legal yet until they adopt a change in the ZDO, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
It's just really bizarre.
The timing is very intricate on this. But the, the county code amendments are not slated to take effect, again, it could all change, but July 1st, 2021. So there's plenty of time and they know the ZDO amendments are coming on the ninth. So it, it, in the end, it will all work, but it, it is a little bit unusual.
But, but what is the rush to get that ordinance changed before? Really weird.
They, they prioritize this to happen. The short-term rentals was one of like the, I don't know, five things that they set like in October, they were going to finish by the end of this year. And the board is changing over. So there is an argument to be made that now is the time, since it's this board that has been following this process and engaged in this for a year and a half. So I, I think there is some, there is some logic to wrapping it up before the board changes over. Not that it couldn't all change again, but at least since they're, they're the ones that have really shepherded this through, they wanted to finish it before the end of December.
Okay. Any other items for Mary's list to share with Martha, to share with the board?
Can I ask? And it doesn't, I guess, doesn't need to be answered. I think what I've heard, I mean, I've certainly heard conversation about the various issues and I've heard several of the commissioners say that they support the regulation. And I don't know if you want me to take anything to the board that specifically says you would support them adopting the county code amendments, or if you're not comfortable saying that because you haven't spent time reading them and don't know exactly what they are. I just want to throw that out there. I'm happy just to list these, these four things that Mary articulated so well.
I think just the list, as far as my opinion is, I think the list is sufficient because we haven't talked through the entire program. We just have our concerns that we want to make sure are part of their discussion.
Yeah, I, that's, that's my, again, I think it's all kind of above our pay grade, so to speak. But I think we've identified some things that are potentially missing from their ordinance that may not have been discussed, that probably should be, that came out of our hearing. And so they should be aware of that, aware of that list.
And I think procedurally, we can characterize this a couple different ways. Martha can simply say various members of the planning commission raised these concerns and share them, which is different than saying the planning commission made a motion and actually, like, if you want this to be something that the planning commission as a whole says, think about these things, I think you need a motion. Otherwise, I think we can just say this is what we heard and we won't characterize it as eight of you all agreed or six of you or whatever.
And I would add, Jennifer, that the board has discussed every one of these. So I think it's more that we too believe these are important and I doubt a motion or no motion will, will carry any different weight. Just want them to feel like we're doing our job.
You're definitely doing your job.
Oh, Michael.
With all respect to Brian and his reference to pay grade, our purpose here, I believe, is to consider what the public wants and to make a recommendation. We're not here to actually pass an ordinance or to put something on place for the public to adhere to. We're, we're here primarily to be an advocacy board that says what we recommend based upon our, our hearing and based upon what our public input is. A pay grade, my pay grade for this is zero. Your pay grade is zero. So we're at the bottom of the totem pole here as far as pay grade goes. Putting that out, tell me what you think and what you feel and what you think is best for the community and don't worry about anything else. That's what we're here for. If they want to accept it, they'll accept it. If they don't, so be it. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
I appreciate that.
Oh, go ahead, Brian.
I, I, I appreciate that. I, you know, I guess my, my view is that we have, our role is to advise the county commission on land use, on land use, you're right. And I think at some point, this goes beyond land use regulation and becomes more about business regulation. And that's kind of beyond our scope as a commission. So that's, that, that was my reference in terms of pay grade.
Okay. Anyone else this evening? Uh, Murph?
Yes, Mary, I want to thank you for the notes you took. You're an anchor to this commission and I agree 100% with what you wrote. And I take Jennifer's advice to just submit this, not as a motion, but as a recommendation from the county or from the planning commission.
Great. Wonderful, wonderful. Okay, a long, long stretch from everyone. It'll be very nice to get this behind guys soon. Martha, as always, well done, bravo. And Jennifer, thank you always for the industry and support. Good to see everybody. Glad your cat's doing well, Ellen. I'm so thankful my horse doesn't need comfort like that. If there's anything else, I, I did have one request before we finished the, oh, well, I guess, I guess we are now done. So we're done with that. Before we move on with the agenda, can one of, somebody from the county check in with Steve? Just because we didn't hear from him. Okay, that'd be awesome. Or, I mean, I can if I have a phone number or something. Okay, I think next on our agenda is any other business. Oh, Louise, did you have a comment?
We don't have minute approve, minutes approval on our agendas. So my other business is where's the minutes approval?
Oh, that's good. Last month was a work study or a work session, so
And so we have no minutes at all.
I don't think we do minutes on work sessions, do we? No. It was more educational on affordable housing as well as short-term rentals. So it was more getting this up to speed for tonight and future hearings. So no, actually no minutes. Are we using those to get to sleep at night or? Okay, any other business, Jennifer?
Oh, no, I, I guess just, I, I don't know if Darcy sent something out today, but if she hasn't, she will. We're canceling both of the meetings in December. So we're looking at probably doing a, yeah, Mary's very sad, study session, most likely in January. Not sure if it'll be the first date or the second date to talk to you about the park, the work done to kind of close out at least the current phase of the Park Avenue project and to start talking about the long-range planning work program. So that'll be coming in January. And at this point, there's no quasi judicial applications in, so we'll just get out to Steve.
I have a question for staff. I have my schedule for Gresham Planning Commission for the next through June. Would you like that? Would that help you to have? So you know my availabilities? Okay, I'll pass that along.
Yes, that's great. Thanks, Mary.
Awesome. And how about Board of County Commissioners?
Just short-term rentals and you're very familiar with all of that. And that is all that's on their agenda land use-wise for the rest of the year. I should mention, and Darcy, I can't believe I'm saying this, we're going to have to recruit for the planning commission soon. So we have, it just feels like we just did this, right? Like Carrie's only been here for like 15 minutes is what it seems like. But, um, anyway, we usually open recruitment around the first of the year. So I'm not going to think about it during the holidays, but Darcy and I will be kicking off that process and I can't even remember whose terms are up, but, but we'll remind you, whoever. Nobody expires till the end of April, but we really need to start in January in order to have time for applications and interviews and all of that, so.
Great.
Jennifer, just a quick question, you know, as we come back to the new year, we're going to have a new commission, right? Do you anticipate any changes in the path of the planning department? And, you know, do we even know yet? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, I think we don't know yet. And so I, I think it's possible, yes, but there's certainly nothing definite at this point. So the plan, and this of course could change because I work for them, not the other way around. But our plan is that we would go to them probably in February. I mean, obviously a lot of departments are going to be wanting to find time, you know? So we'll have to see, but most likely February to try to do two things. Talk about what's on the work program right now and kind of where that all is. And then also because we're starting with a new two-year program, July 1st, to share with them what we've heard from you in January and what we've heard from the public and CPOs and all of that. And then, you know, get their thoughts as well and kind of, yeah. So I think I'll know a lot more in about three months, but right now.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Oh, and you forgot our increase in pay grade.
Right. I mean, that, yeah, we're going to get in front of them on that. We're going to give you guys zero times two next year.
Thank you. Michael, did you have a comment?
Yes. With the new situation with the virus and what have you, any changes that you might have heard about staffing at the county level, you know, regarding the planning commissioner or, or, or anything in, in your area? I, I understand that we're going under a budget review at the county level and I'm concerned about that, the reduction of services in, in a number of areas. The police department, I mean, and the sheriff's department, you know, the planning area. We need some input into that as, so, so that we can understand what's happening and it, it's going to affect what we do too. So please, please be open with us on that, if you would, please.
Sure. I mean, at this point, I don't, I don't know much, other than there is a new budget process that's going to be rolled out. And I don't, I know next to nothing about it, but I expect I'll be learning a lot come January. You know, the planning department did, we did lose two positions. They weren't full, they weren't, they were vacant, right, from retirements, but we lost two positions in the budget that we're currently in. So whether there will be additional cuts for us for next fiscal year, it's just simply too soon to tell. We currently have, we had two retirements. Neither of them were planners that had been in front of the planning commission. Well, at least with one in recent memory. So probably not, but some of you might be, remember Rick McIntyre from just calling the planning department, right? So Rick retired at the end of August. And then we had a planner trainee, Carol Dawson, that retired. Oh gosh, I can't remember the actual effective date now, but anyway, in the fall. So we have two openings currently. We do not intend to fill one of them and we are, we just closed a recruitment for a planner one. So interviews are coming up over the next couple of weeks. So we'll be filling one and leaving the other one vacant because we think it's prudent at this point because we don't know. There is a lot of certainly budgetary uncertainty right now, given the situation with the economy. Happy to keep you informed as I learn things.
Well, well, thank you very much. And everyone you've brought up to us has been extraordinarily knowledgeable and we really appreciate that. And my, my question, of course, was based upon a, a February op-ed that the sheriff put out about doing a forensic audit on the county budgets. And I, I was very concerned about that. And I don't know how that's progressing along, but it, it is a concern that we don't reduce the services that we have in our county.
All right. Are there any other comments? I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 9:05 PM. Thank you, everyone. Again, you're my hero, Martha. Well done and always good to see everybody. Good to see Louise and everybody. Awesome. Good night.
Happy holidays.
Have a safe holiday.
And enjoy working.
See you next thing's come. Night.